Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have been in closed session, and so we're going to ask our legal counsel for a report out of closed session.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council members, the community, and staff. Tonight, we can report out that the city has been out of closed session with legal counsel, that the city has been working with Elliott Homes on a framework for potential resolution of their claims relating to warehouses proposed on property they own in Stone Creek. And the settlement and release will include a proposed purchase by the city of property owned by Elliott that is proposed for approximately 600,000 square feet of warehouse development immediately across the street from the Dermody Logistics Center project, and also parcels on the north side of North Mather. The city manager will have additional comments about this matter under his report later this evening.
Thank you, Adam. So we'll welcome everyone to today's regular meeting now of the city council, and I ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Recording stopped.
Councilmember Terry.
Wait a minute. Are we good?
We're good.
Okay.
Now, the TV's recording instead of Zoom, right?
We've made a transition.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Gatewood is absent this evening. Councilmember Pulapati is also absent this evening. Vice Mayor Sander?
Here.
Mayor Budge?
Here. Thank you. Stacy, will you read all the Metro Cable TV announcements?
Yes. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, April 6th at 6:00 p.m. and Friday, April 7th at 6:00 p.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. At this point, we're going to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Tara Colvinbach if she would lead us in the pledge, and we'll remain standing, if you will, for just a couple of minutes afterwards. We don't have an invocation tonight, but there have been so many people in this country who have suffered for a variety of reasons over the last couple of weeks that we will just take a minute and honor them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So keep everybody in your thoughts, please. Please be seated. So the first item on our agenda is a presentation by the newly reconstituted Rancho Cordova Food Locker. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. I'm Carrie Johnson, the new Rancho Cordova Food Locker Executive Director. Mayor Budge and city council, thanks for the opportunity to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing at the food locker. Over the last year, I've had the privilege to work with the volunteers in the community to improve food access and hunger relief for the folks in Rancho Cordova. As a 37-year resident of this city, I feel full of gratitude to be able to work on behalf of the community. Oh, I have it here. Sorry. This one. Working? There we go. With the goal of sustainability for the food locker, I hit the ground running 12 months ago, and we've begun a remarkable transformation. Using the 2021 feasibility study as guideposts and the board's strategic plan, we've accomplished a great deal toward that goal. The feasibility study by the city clearly articulated the critical social service role the food locker plays in providing food access for families facing hunger. The original board developed a two-year strategic plan focused on improving the administration, the infrastructure, and operational capacity of the food locker. I'm pleased to share that the strategic plan was completed last month, one year ahead of schedule. During my first five months as the executive director, I was able to secure two major grants. First, last May, $100,000 grant that was awarded from Sacramento County in partnership with Don Natale's office. And most remarkably, a $2.5 million capital improvement grant was awarded with the help of Ken Cooley's office. Those funds should be coming our way in about 60 days. The food locker has two primary programs, food distribution and food recovery. With the improvements to our operations and infrastructure, we've been able to meet the demands of a 56% increase over the last year in the number of households that we serve. Each month, over 2,400 families visit the food locker, many who never thought they would be faced with hunger. One in four of the folks, the guests that we see, that we help are children whose parents are working poor. In addition, we've seen a significant increase in the number of seniors, veterans, the unhoused, immigrants, and college students, all finding their way to the food locker in need of food. Today, helping over 600 families providing groceries and hope each week. There is a lot of good news. There's plenty of food, and I want to say that again, there is plenty of food, and we have the potential to receive as much as we may need. Food recovery is our second most important program. The food locker is the only designated food recovery agency in our city. Each day, our trucks pick up edible, healthy, and high-quality food from local grocery stores listed here. Our efforts support the mandate of SB 1383. Over the last year, we recovered over a half-million pounds of high-quality food that otherwise would be diverted into landfills. With limited hours at our current location, we've had to forge some innovative partnerships to identify and reach folks facing food insecurity, like the kids at the Rancho Cordova Youth Center, who before they left on Fridays were stuffing their backpacks full of snacks so they'd have something to eat over the weekend. Powell reached out to the food locker, and now, moving forward, we provide a full bag of groceries to each kid to take home over the weekend to ensure that they have food. In May, we responded to a request from the Student Success Center at Folsom Lake College. The students at Rancho Cordova Center were experiencing food insecurity, and they asked if we could help. Our first pop-up distribution was launched using People's Choice Model, so every other Thursday, we're on the Rancho campus distributing groceries to students in need. We're working with the Veterans Village and the VOA to provide regular, ready-to-eat groceries and meals for veterans living in transitional housing. And unhoused students in the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District find a welcoming environment at the food locker. We've arranged for special dates and times that they can come and receive food, helping to make it easier and fight the stigma of getting in line to receive food. Over the last year, we've paved the way for the food locker to become an innovative, culturally relevant, and sustainable organization that provides a critical social service to the community. As we look ahead, there are more opportunities to continue our path to sustainability and create a model food locker, one that cares for guests with dignity, ensures that no one goes hungry. Looking ahead is our next chapter, and many of the possible programs are up on your screen right now. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for some really great work. I know you've been working closely with the city, with the Cordova Community Council, and with your board.
Yes.
It's great to have the food locker be such an active part of our community, and I'm happy the city can play sort of that stimulating role to allow all these other wonderful things to happen. So congratulations on that, and we look forward to great success, you know, including probably a new location.
We will be having a new location.
Additional services, yeah. It's very exciting.
Great. Well, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just echo the same thing. I know we've met a couple of times recently, and I've gotten to witness firsthand the improvements and the sophistication that you've brought to the organization. So thank you for your leadership.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate it. Okay, so we will go on to public comment, and we'll remind everyone that citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. And not only will we take items on this agenda coming up, but we will take anyone who was not able to speak to the closed session agenda, and anyone who would choose to speak to the agenda for the closed session after the city council meets in regular session. Remember, please, that we can't take action on any item that is not on the agenda, and we would ask everyone to take three minutes. Stacy?
We'll start with Greg Mylenberg. Following Greg will be Helen Wayland-Bachar. Following Helen will be Marilyn Metzger and Paul Carroll.
Good evening, city council. Greg Mylenberg, resident of Stone Creek, Rancho Cordova. I was denied access to the 5 o'clock meeting for public comment. The doors were locked. Cannot put a delivery card to the city clerk in order to make my comments. I am opposing the warehouse. I do appreciate your consideration for purchasing the property from Elliott in order to have potential houses or whatever else might contrive for that to maintain the business professional area that was zoned unoriginally. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Helen, I think?
Yes. Helen.
Good evening, Helen.
Hi, and congratulations on the upcoming birthday. You tried to ignore it. It's on the agenda, and you didn't cover it.
I think we did a good job.
Yes, yes. Okay. My comment is...
Did we skip something on the agenda? Is that...
Yes, we skipped somebody's birthday.
We did. No, I mean, the second it was mayor's prerogative, but...
She's a little embarrassed.
I was gonna say, we may need to go back there after public comment.
Probably not.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear mayor. Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
I was gonna say, we can't take your time for that, so, okay.
No. Giving her back. Yes. You want me to?
Okay, if you can see that picture, you almost had it there. I'm here to talk about the, there's a sign up there to the left of the horses. It's a sign that the city gave us, saying, "No equestrian." That is a pedestrian easement. It was designed for the fishermen to have the orchard entrance into the American River to go fishing. This just happened today. It happened yesterday. Barbara Cassis is very verbally abusive to me when I bring it up to her, and I want to know, and I've been here several times for several things, I want to know about the catch sacks that you're going to look into, because last week, there was a pile this big at the gate going into the park on the bicycle lane. I also want to know, when do we have the teeth with this sign? When do we get to address Barbara, who's living on residential land with two horses? Maybe we should revoke the agreement that Cyrus gave to her that she could keep the horses there, because if you allow this at this time, what happens when the subdivision comes in? Because Barbara's told me she has the right to ride anywhere in the subdivision she wants, once it's built on the Cassis area. You have a person that is abusing the system because she knew people. We've allowed horses in residential area. I want something, and I want her off that piece of land. I've been maintaining that for several decades now. Susan Wong owns the easement. Susan Wong is happy that I maintain it, and Susan does not want the horses there, because after the active shooter we had there, and the three vehicles went down, that easement is deteriorating and eroding. You have those two horses clomping up and down there. When I go to cut the grass there, I'm tired of running into horse manure. So I think it's about time the city either ban her horses or give her an option to continue riding the horses on the street the way she's supposed to, because I'm just getting tired of it. I think the city needs to do something about it. That's, to me, is an abuse of position, because she's a Cassis, and she has friends in the city. So, you know, I can't have a horse in my yard, so why can she have one in her residential area? It was turned residential in, like, 2012, and her piece of property is under an acre. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Paul, I think. Marilyn Metzger.
Marilyn.
And then Paul.
Good evening. I'm Marilyn from Stone Creek. I'm speaking today on behalf of two local truck drivers, and you may thank me now, because they wanted to come with all their trucks and put them out in the front yard. My words are actually their words that were sent to me via a very long Nextdoor post or in private messages. These drivers know that their work provides residents everywhere with everything they need, use, in their lives. While everyone orders from the comfort of their own homes, they are out driving their rigs through all types of weather on freeways and streets, where residents and other drivers resent them for just being there. But they need to be there just to get everybody what they need. Unfortunately, they are quickly becoming a local problem in many cities because of the planning of warehouses down the street or adjacent to their own homes, residents and neighbors. And those neighbors are beginning to see truck drivers as the incoming and increasing enemy or intruder, the future source of traffic congestion, 24/7 noise, and air pollution in their own neighborhoods where they live. But they have to work and would prefer to work locally, but that's almost impossible because very few cities, including Rancho, have adequate semi-truck parking. It is the number-one problem for truckers in America, everywhere. Problem number two is the escalating drop in truck drivers. American Trucking Association states the shortage can be as high as 175,000 to 200,000 by 2025. They're dropping like flies because it is such a difficult business to be in. Currently, Rancho Cordova is their problem. There are no semi-truck parking here, except in a couple of small corridors along Sunrise or on Douglas. There was a truck lot at Security Park, but that closed a year ago, so their choices are to risk parking on the street or paying very high fees at truck parking facilities, the closest one being 13 miles away, off Stockton and Highway 50. And for another side of the parking coin, Bold Beauty Warehouse is a perfect example of inadequate site parking for even local delivery box trucks. There are anywhere from 25 to 40 trucks there daily, making formations that would make Tetris proud. And there is no designated truck parking area on that site. Why? Because the city design guidelines' parking ratios were not adhered to by the city planning department, city council, or the developer in the rush to get it built during COVID. The developers of these existing and prospective warehouses cannot exist without truck drivers, but Dermody and others don't assist or support them in any way as far as providing legal parking or amenities on sites such as food, lounge, showers, et cetera. Local drivers want the local work, but they want it further away from their families, homes, and especially the schools that their children attend. And it sounds like you guys took care of that one. And they want Rancho Cordova to provide sufficient legal parking areas for their trucks, not just their trailers on warehouse sites. They request that you make a conditional and permanent for any warehouse, provide parking and other amenities for the linchpin, the truckers, that make it all happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Paul?
Following Paul will be Eric Weiniger.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and council members. I am Paul Carroll from Stone Creek. I'd like to emphasize the points that were made by architect Stan Sedolko in his March 29th letter to the council. Mr. Sedolko has over 30 years of experience in the city of Rancho in the area of doing commercial and industrial design. To quote his letter, "The city attorney stated in the March 6th meeting that 'the time to have objected to this type of development being allowed should have been during the establishment of the Z-Spa.' Though possibly technically correct, Stan states, 'I hope each of you were as offended by this as we, the residents of the area, were and are.'" Continuing to quote this professional architect, living and practicing his profession in this community, "Over the last 20-plus years, the concept of light industrial use has evolved significantly, and now, due to interpretation, includes uses that require far more intensive truck traffic that was then typical of industrial or even heavy industrial uses. This type of traffic was never anticipated when the Z-Spa zoning for light industrial was established or the ER being written." He goes on to say, "The need for an air quality study confirming the claims that these warehouses and related trucks have a significant negative impact on our area is critical for the long-term health and continued prosperity of Rancho Cordova. The same can be said for the proposed scale of these buildings. Elliott Homes' own sales material from the early 2000s demonstrates the anticipated nature and scale of the BP and LI zoned areas. BP was to be small-scale office parks, if you look at the original development or plans for this particular development, and light industrial was represented as industrial office park complexes with 10,000 to 50,000 square-foot buildings, which is essentially what you had approved for Stone Creek Industrial. We do not wish to have single, monolithic, massive buildings adjacent to the residential areas," Stan goes on to say, "and has seen in other areas of California, this type of development irrevocably and negatively alters the nature of the residential community. Twenty-plus years ago, it was not anticipated, having this scale of building adjacent to residential, and therefore, the current plans violate the design guidelines." I'd like to thank the architect, Mr. Sedolko, for sharing this professional opinion with us and with you, the council members, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Paul. Eric?
Good evening, everyone. Eric Weiniger. I have learned a few things during my education, but two of them stand out, both having to do with the acquisition of knowledge. One is show your work. What is your answer based on? Is it opinion, or is it based on reasons with a valid foundation? Number two, challenge your assumptions. Are your conclusions based on what you were looking for, called confirmation bias, or did you look at all the data? Most of us learned the first lesson in grade school when our teachers downgraded us by just giving an answer without showing how we got it. The second I learned in grad school from a Nobel Prize-winning scientist. I asked him for advice for a beginning scientist. His response was, quote, "Look at the thing that you did not anticipate." I see neither of these things in the legal pronouncements that have been issued in relation to our warehouse discussions. We have seen no thorough written evaluation of any of our legal arguments. All we have heard are limited statements to the effect of, quote, "We agree with Dermody's attorney." There has been no discussion of the arguments from Gloria Smith or Don Mooney, the resident's attorneys, in relation to the challenges, to the arguments put forth by the developer's attorney. All these attorneys, including ours, are advocates, but we do not see any objective review of those positions, including the Hanson-Bridget letter. This has resulted in our group, in our community, of a less-than-objective assessment, bias, should I use that word, on the part of the legal department of the city. We do not feel like our legal concerns, as represented by our attorneys, have been objectively reviewed, nor has the science been reviewed. The paradigm, like I spoke recently about, or mindset that I have mentioned before, the built-in attitudes or worldview that everyone has, are clearly favoring the expected conclusions that the developer's views are correct. The most galling evidence of this attitude is the city attorney's response in 2020 to the GLP Bold Beauty Sequo challenge. Quote from the letter from that city attorney, "The city lacks the discretion under the major design review approval process to consider environmental effects not related to the design of the project, including, but not limited to, health impacts from toxic air contaminants, greenhouse gas emission, and impacts to biological resources." This is what set me off originally. This health impact that is quoted was shown in that challenge to be five times the accepted level of risk in the community by the local air district, an objective source, I believe, that this attorney did not raise an alarm to this fact is unconscionable and outrageous and is a betrayal of their stewardship towards the community. We ask that you follow your previous vote of conscience to retain your denial of the far-reaching community impacts from these warehouses. And it was good, I look forward to hearing more about this recent process of the settlement on land purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody else?
We do have a hand raised in Zoom. I'm going to unmute Catherine. Catherine, you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Kat Fuentez, and I'm the lead representative of We Care, the largest and fastest-growing childcare network in the nation. We represent over 120,000 microenterprise businesses nationwide, with over 30 family childcare providers in Rancho Cordova interested in receiving support through the city's CIF funding allocation. As you know, childcare can be a significant barrier to entry into the workforce.
Ma'am, excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, I'm sorry to forgive my interruption, but we believe collectively that you're speaking on the item that's on the agenda later for discussion. There's the grants that are later on in the agenda, if that's correct, if you could. We look forward to your comments, but we'd like to hear them when that item is heard this evening.
My apologies. I thought this was general public comment. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's actually what I told them.
And are we misunderstanding? The city manager and I thought it was on a grant.
No, I really did say...
Community enhancement fund, she just said it.
Yeah, I really did say that you could speak on any item on the agenda.
Oh, excuse me.
In order to encompass the 5 o'clock closed session and the later closed session, so...
Then I apologize, ma'am.
Yeah, Catherine. It's okay. Go ahead, please.
I'm so sorry about the confusion.
But tell us again what the name of the organization is?
Yes, so the organization that I represent is called We Care, and I did send some emails out to a few of the members, so I would highly encourage you all to respond if you'd like to know more detailed information about the company I work for or for the program that we are trying to propose in the city of Rancho Cordova. But I was going to mention that, as you know, childcare can be a significant barrier to entry into the workforce, especially for women. Many working parents struggle to balance their job responsibilities with the demands of caring for their children, and in the absence of affordable and quality childcare options, many parents are often forced to choose between working and staying home. Addressing these challenges is critical to ensuring that all individuals have an equal opportunity to participate in the workforce and reach their full economic potential. This includes promoting policies that support working families and prioritize childcare providers, who are the foundation of a healthy workforce. So I'd love to provide you all more information and how we're helping low and moderate-income communities access affordable childcare through local economic development programs that support microenterprise businesses in Rancho Cordova. And so again, I urge you to respond back to my initial email of outreach, and if you'd like to learn more, I would love to set up a one-on-one time where I could then describe the full details of the program. Thank you all for this opportunity to speak, and I look forward to the future meetings.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Catherine. Anybody else?
We do not have any, let's see, Catherine? No. We do not have any additional public comment in Zoom. The city clerk's office did receive public comment via email. The emails have been distributed to the city council. They've been placed on the city's website, and they are also available in the back of the council chambers for your review. The first email that the city clerk's office received is from Marilyn Metzger. Number two is Brenda Augustin, Valerie Knipstchild, Diane Rogers, and Paul Carroll.
Okay. Super. Thank you, Stacy. All right, then we will go on to council reports, and we will start with Donald.
I'll be brief. I got to attend the National League of Cities Community Development, Community and Economic Development National Committee back in DC. Interesting conversations, lots of conversations and concerns around corporate investments on single-family homes, especially in the Midwest, it sounds like, quite a bit around Cleveland. But it's becoming, sounding like it's becoming much more of a problem, and that Wall Street is really moving in on homeownership in many communities and preventing and actually escalating prices and driving out a lot of current residents. That was most of the conversation. There were some conversations around reauthorization of the, or the update of the Community Investment Act, a few other things, but that was kind of some of the main topics of the three hours that we had. I have notes here saying, "Talk about civic well," but I think I talked about that at the last meeting, so I'll just leave it with that. Haven't had any other committees as of the last two weeks.
Okay. Thank you. David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was also at the National League of Cities meeting last week, serving as second vice president. I saw Donald there very briefly. He walked by the hallway, I think, heard my voice in the lunch. I was...
I heard you and then turned around and saw the back of your head and thought, "That might be him."
That might be him. That might be him.
And, yeah.
But...
In the basement, I think we were four stories underground.
Four stories down. So the meeting's at a new location, perhaps long distance, where you attended. We're not at the Marriott Wardmore Park anymore, we're at Marriott Downtown, much closer to the Capitol, New Marriott. Marriott Marquis, I think?
Yeah, it's the Marriott Marquis, and it's connected to the convention center, but all the meetings were in the hotel, and all their meeting spaces in the basement. You just keep going down to get to the...
Yeah, yeah.
It was fascinating. I've never been in that hotel.
Oh, really? It's a very nice space, you know, modern space for a meeting, and we had a lot of very interesting guests. I spent a lot of time up on the stage hosting sessions, other times talking to small groups. I have to say, I'm not perhaps getting as much education as I used to out of this, but I'm getting far greater contact with individuals, and so there will be some direct benefits to Rancho, I'll probably talk about in the future with regard to that, some opportunities we have that are going to be presented to us as a result. I'm not sure who the youth group is, who is leaving, but thank you guys so much for being here.
These are our kids at City Hall.
Oh!
We will see more of them as the year goes on.
Excellent.
We have a funding request to keep paying for that. You guys think, is it a good idea? Should we keep paying? Okay, thanks.
Very good. Thank you guys for being here. So I was able to talk to cabinet secretaries, members of Congress, attend a White House briefing, various activities like that, met with very selected officials. An extremely busy meeting as second vice president, the sort of thing where I wake up in the morning and I've got 28 things on my calendar for the day, meetings to go to. I shared with you colleagues that one day I gave eight speeches on different topics to different groups. So I'm excited about my role in the organization and the opportunities we're going to have coming forward, and I want to remind you that I will be inaugurated as president of that organization in November in Atlanta.
Yeah.
And we're hoping to have a large contingent from, actually, the Sacramento area attend that in addition to us. So with that, I'm going to...
Tentatively, I will be there.
Very good.
Do you know which hotel they're having that at?
I don't, but I can probably find it. Oh, it is. It's by the, is that the one by CNN?
The CNN Omni, yeah.
Yeah, the CNN Omni Convention Center.
That's where the summer one was last year, right?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, same place. And with that, back to you, Madam Mayor.
Well, this has been a busy two weeks, guys, and I stayed right here, but I was as busy as David and Donald were. So I hope everybody got to see our film about the history of Rancho Cordova when it was, oh, good, when it was on. Yes, I heard from you, Valerie, that was terrific. We all know people who were in that movie and events and participated in some of those events, and it was really quite fascinating.
Was it a little spooky to see yourself on TV?
No, but, no, not that part, but the part that struck me, even though we all saw it at Mill Station that night, it was almost like watching it again fresh.
Yeah.
And I was really absolutely amazed, especially the stuff about LBJ and, because I remember LBJ and Barry Goldwater coming to Warner Robins to campaign and driving down the Main Boulevard in their giant Lincoln Continentals, the ones with the doors that open up in the middle.
I had the great experience of my very busy high school senior son walking into the room while I'm watching it, freezing, waiting, wait a second. You're on the TV.
Too funny. Well, it will be, for those of you who haven't seen it yet, it will be shown again several times.
Was Guy there when Cordova opened?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
Yes, Guy Anderson, Guy Anderson, Ray Savorn, and John Barrows were all there the first year. Barrows were all there the first year. I see everybody nodding in agreement. They were absolutely the most famous teachers at school and were there for decades. Last, this past weekend was a very pleasant weekend, but two weekends ago, a bunch of us from the Park District and went out with all these adorable little girls for Cordova Girls Softball, and we just absolutely froze because of that incredible north wind, and of course, I will, my excuse will always be that the ball didn't leave my hand because it froze to my hand, so I had to redo it to actually get the ball out of my hand to throw it to the lovely little catcher.
It is the worst part of being mayor, by the way, having to pitch to Little League and Girl Softball. Yeah.
Last year, it worked out real fine. This year, not so much.
Honestly, it's only softball that makes us do that. Little League, it's the littlest kid that throws it to the biggest kid.
And the oldest kid.
Right, the youngest kid and the oldest kid.
Yeah.
So unless you're butchering people's names when you're introducing them, that's all, that's the only danger that you have.
That is a chance of Little League. Years ago, there was a role for us in Little League, and we dodged it when they did the senior junior thing, so I guess we shouldn't talk about it to bring it back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy to show up at Little League and read the names because that works fine for me, but it's a lot easier, for me, that's a lot easier than throwing out the first pitch, believe me.
I would say it's certainly less dangerous than lighting the fireworks.
That too. So the Sacramento Symphony was in town, and I did catch them over at KP Market. I took a granddaughter to see the wonderful play at the Black Box Theater at the California Capitol Film Office, the one about Billie Holiday, which was really incredibly good, very fascinating. We had a regional transit meeting, and I want to give you some statistics, not to bore you, but because RT actually managed to keep up their performance during these last three, the last three years, when so many transit agencies around the country were really not. They actually have 700 operators, and they kept 97% of their regular routes working. RT is very far, very proud of the fact that they pay the women on their staff on par with their men, and the general manager wanted everybody to know that since March had been Women's History Month. Siemens next year will deliver the first three of the low-flow cars, and reconstruction of the stations is coming to Rancho Cordova. It's been downtown, but it will come to Tarantio also, and...
Excuse me, ma'am, we need to...
They expect to have...
But we don't have a quorum right now.
Okay.
We just need to pause the meeting.
Pause that thought.
Pause.
Sorry, there's a lot of pressure when there's only three of you.
She's getting something to drink, sorry.
I stole one from somebody who wasn't here. Siemens will deliver the first three of the low-flow cars next year, and ultimately, there will be 30 of them. This summer, they're going to break ground on the double-tracking to Folsom, which will really help timing and movement on the goal line. They have completed their bus stop improvement plan, and they're going to kick off a variety of improvements to bus stops, and there's actually a, I'm pretty sure that what they plan to do is the bus stops that are in different jurisdictions, it will say, like Welcome to Rancho Cordova. In terms of service updates, their on-time performance is 83%. Trip cancellation is usually because there is no operator. And they've, and one of the reasons they've been able to keep their operators working is that because they did boost their wages and start assigning bonus for people who are willing to come to work for RT. There was a lovely reception here at City Hall to welcome the Easter Seals Organization to their new offices in Rancho Cordova. Saturday was a very busy day. There's a brand-new WH Williamson Park over at the intersection of Coloma and Stouderes, going into that neighborhood by the Cordova Church of Christ, and they partnered, the Tree Foundation and the Park District partnered to plant several dozen trees over there in a variety of trees that will grow very nicely in that soil. And then I went over to a rebuilding event in partnership with Republic on Oakton Drive, and that was really, really nice. There's, if you go to the Republic website, they're supposed to have a drone video because the mom, it was two houses, and the mom had designed a really lovely front yard of rocks, but it's big, it's a big, it's big flower petals in their front yard, really completely unique and very nice. So we will turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to build on the Easter Seals of Superior California, we did have a nice reception for their move in their office here, but not only that, they are also one of our newest vendors, serving the city facilities as a contract that was approved a meeting or two ago, and so really appreciate them, not only as a new location here at Rancho Cordova, serving the larger community and the broader community, but also as a service provider to us as well. And so, thank you for mentioning that. I wanted to highlight a couple of things. One is, I wanted to honor Maria Chacon Niedstedt, who's been selected to serve on the Race Equity and Inclusion Regional Working Group, put together by SECOG, and serving us in that effort of one of a few cities that are participating and looking at how to find opportunity from a regional perspective in that space. And so, I want to congratulate Maria on that. And then also, want to follow up on the report out from the settlement discussion from our city attorney, and update the council and the public that we have sent a proposed letter of intent to Elliot Holmes to acquire parcels that are listed in the agenda today that include approximately 30 acres of contiguous property across from Navigator Elementary and the Department of Military, and also 12 acres on the north side of North Mather next to the Bureau of Automotive Repair. And so, we have sent that letter out and are working with the other party in that process. So that's all for my update, and more to come on that.
Wonderful, thank you. So we'll move into, move into, excuse me, we will move into our consent calendar items. Consent calendar items are deemed routine and can be approved with one motion unless there isn't anybody on the city council who has a question or wants to pull any of those items.
Move approval?
Stacy, thank you. Stacy, do we have any public comment on any of those items?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for items on the consent calendar.
Okay, so that's items 9.1 through 9.5. So will you call the roll, please?
We had a motion by Sander.
Yes.
And a second by Terry.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood is absent. Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. So we're going to move into consent public hearing items, and we have one of those, so we'll ask you to read the title of that one.
We have two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You're right. Okay, you want to read the titles?
10.1 is Amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Program 2020 Annual Action Plan and 2020 through 2024 Consolidated Plan. Item 10.2 is a second reading of an ordinance amending Title IV Business Regulation, Chapter 4.07 Tobacco Retailer License and Chapter 4.50 Other Businesses, Title VIII Animals, Chapter 8.03 General Provisions, and Chapter 8.09 Procedures. Title 16 Buildings and Construction, Chapter 16.05 Historical Building Code, Chapter 16.10 Existing Building Code, Chapter 16.20 Housing Code, and Chapter 16.26 Energy Code. Title 22 Land Development, Chapter 22.40 Park and Recreation Dedication and Fees, and Chapter 22.170 Local Parks and Recreational Facilities. Title 23 Zoning Code, Chapter 23 dot 310 Residential Zoning Districts in the Folsom Boulevard Specific Plan, Table 2-2 Use Table for Mixed Use Classifications, and finding the adoption of this ordinance is exempt under California Environmental Quality Act SEQA Section 15061B3, 15301, and 15324.
Super, thank you. I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment on either of these items?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for these items, and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Are we ready for motion?
I will move approval.
Okay. And I will close the public hearing and ask you to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Gatewood is absent, and Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you. We have no public hearing items, but we do have a regular calendar item, and who would like to present that? Stacy? You want to read that?
I will go ahead and read the title. The subject is "An Update on the Fiscal Year 2023 Through 2024: Community Enhancement and Investment Fund Applications Received for Council Consideration."
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Stacy Delaney, and to my right is Randy K. Stevens, and together with Lindsay Samples, we make your Community Enhancement and Investment Team. And this evening, I'm going to be presenting information on the grant applications that just came in during this latest grant application cycle. So tonight is really the start of the discussions for the fiscal year 2324 grant cycle for Measure H specifically, and this will be the first of several meetings where we will be presenting information. We're not actually looking for any decisions tonight. The fun with all the decisions and the grants will start on Tuesday, April 11th. That's when we're going to share recommendations for the first time, and that will continue through the May council meetings. So tonight, we're just going to look at a brief overview of the budget, or the Measure H budget allocations, both for the current fiscal year as well as the projections for next fiscal year. I'm going to share just a general, high-level overview of the applications that have been received, and then we're going to review the timeline. So believe it or not, this is the ninth grant application cycle that has taken place since Measure H was originally passed, and this year, we actually had the largest number of grant applications submitted. That number was 113, so there were a lot of interest by the community on the available grants. And before we start talking about the grant applications themselves, a few little highlights about the revenue forecast. So when the original budget for fiscal year 2023 was approved by council back in June, that budget was $11.4 million. That was based upon the estimates we felt the revenues were going to come in as. That number has actually increased, and so the most current estimate is that it's going to be closer to $12.5 million in both 2223 as well as the projections for 2324. So we'll come back to you, most likely in the May timeframe, to discuss where that additional $1.1 million will go. But when we're initially talking about the community grants, that focus will start on This represents how the funding was allocated in fiscal year 2223, and again, this is based upon the approved $11.4 million budget. Historically, these averages have been pretty close, usually within 1% to 3% of what you're seeing on the screen. The community grant section, which is the pie piece in yellow, historically, that has been somewhere around 22%, so what was funded last year is very consistent with what we expect to see even as we go forward. When we're looking towards the future and you have a $12.5 million budget, that piece of the pie ends up equalling close to $3 million, but the overall percentage is roughly the So this pie chart represents kind of the tentative allocation by key area in fiscal year 2324. year 2324. This pie chart is based upon a $12.5 million budget, and it's using just the tentative allocations that were shown to council when Kim Duran presented the visioning budget to show the next two-year budget cycle and what we were projecting. The main changes you'll see on this screen is the elimination of the focus area that said community and economic development, and that's because you'll see that under Measure R going forward as opposed to Measure H. And then you'll see the addition of the Legacy Project Operations Budget, which is shown as the 10% on this screen. These numbers will get fine-tuned as we go through the budget process, so this is just supposed to be illustrative of what it's most likely going to look like. So again, this is the start. We opened our application cycle back in February. And when we opened the grant application cycle, we also made available workshops every Wednesday where we would meet with any applicant who was interested in learning more about the process. So we did that through the entire application cycle, and that went through March 17th. During that timeframe, we had 113 grant applications that were submitted. Two people withdrew their application, so there's 111 for consideration. Those applications total nearly $10 million, and we anticipate that the total community grants will equal $3 million, but council has already approved $1 million of that because we have several multi-year grants that continue through at least fiscal year 2324. So when we come back starting April 11th, you'll see recommendations that get you closer to the additional $2 million that's anticipated to be approved in the community grant section. This is the proposed timeline, so we'll come back on Tuesday, April 11th. That's when we're going to share the first recommendations on the community grants. That night, we'll be focused on this topic. We'll come back on either May 1st and/or May 15th, and then we'll continue those discussions, adding in some of the other focus areas. Kim Duran will present the budget during the May 23 budget work session, and then on June 5th, we're anticipating that council will adopt not only the community enhancement and investment fund resolutions, but the overall city budget as well. Also tonight, we made available all of the grants that were submitted and any of the supplemental materials that we received, so both council and the public have access to that information as part of this agenda packet. And then when we come back on April 11th, there will be a more detailed summary that includes not only a description, but our overall recommendation. That concludes my presentation for tonight. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those. If not, I'll be back on Tuesday night.
Okay, Stacy. Donald, questions for Stacy and everybody? David?
Stacy, the revenue projections were there. Did you mention, maybe I just missed it, did you mention the likelihood of money unspent from previous years?
Just the portion that is unallocated, meaning you approved 11.4, and we think it's going to be 12.5, so there is that $1.1 million delta. The legacy fund project, and that discussion will take place later in May.
Okay. At that point, you was...
Can I ask a question about?
Go ahead.
So, so currently, do we do it the same way that we do the general fund? So if there is additional funds that weren't planned, they just fall into the legacy fund account?
In the past, you have approved additional projects in some cases. So last year, in the April timeframe, the same thing occurred where we had additional revenues projected. And so at that time, council approved, like the Steeplechase Project and some other additional projects.
Things that were coming up in the current fiscal year.
Correct. But you also have the option of putting it towards legacy projects.
But we choose that at some point before the budget is enacted. Okay. That's what I was going to say, I'm like, by practice, we might be doing that, but I was going to say, I don't recall us making a policy that we would just take it and throw it in there, so, okay.
Correct.
Good, thank you.
You'll be given options.
My apologies for interrupting, I just wanted to understand.
No, that's fine. So we've also got some unspent dollars, as always. Will those also be included in previous or next discussion?
It probably won't be part of April 11th's discussion, but it'll be part of the overall legacy fund discussion.
By the time we get to the end of that process?
Yes.
Okay.
Just real quick, Stacy, is that, you know, a lot of the unspent, some of these contracts go beyond just the date of, of April or May. And so I think sometimes there's still outstanding contracts that are still working through some of that funding, so at some point, that does come back if there's unspent dollars to, for discussion, but sometimes these contracts are, go beyond these, these months.
Well, and we, we all know that during 2020, there was a bunch of them that they couldn't function, right? So we, we plan stuff that you couldn't have events and some of the other things. I think the community council got a little creative in trying to still do some of those things, but the vast majority of things that included more than one person, you know, near each other, could be spent for years.
I will say, our team is very good at doing amendments to contracts and, and working with the different parties, especially during the COVID years, where the virtual pictures that, you know, went through many iterations of these 80 or so contracts, many, many of them were amended during that period of time to extend the options and opportunities.
Our motto was flexibility with accountability, so if they had a way of delivering in a slightly different format, we tried to work with them as much as possible.
Yeah, Stacy and staff, I just want to thank you guys for your work here. You know, it's really important to the community that we accomplish all these goals. We're doing something incredibly unique that is simply not done elsewhere, anywhere that I'm really aware of, in making this level of community grant and able to do really remarkable things for our residents. But it's because you guys keep your nose to the grindstone and help a lot of folks along through the process and make accommodations for, you know, their lack of sophistication in some cases, or bad timing, or circumstance. But that, that flexibility that we show towards applicants, I think, is really remarkable and says a lot about how we want to operate as a city. So you're doing a great job out there representing us.
Thank you, the whole team.
Do we have any public comment on the item?
Yes, we do. The first speaker that we have is Daryl Langwell.
And actually, I should mention that we have Catherine and, and the we folks. She's the one who spoke earlier.
Yes.
Okay.
Got it.
Daryl, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Budge, city council, and staff. My name's Daryl Langwell, I'm from the Vineyards neighborhood. Last year, the city council awarded a grant to an organization that has a membership policy that discriminates due to religious beliefs. In my opinion, private organizations have the right to set any membership policies they wish. However, I do not believe that a governmental body should provide any funding to any organization that discriminates for any reason. I hope in the future, individuals reviewing the grant applications and the city council, when approving the grants, would be mindful of any organization with a discriminatory policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Did you share that with staff?
Yeah, I was going to say, you don't need to share the name here, but if you can make sure that staff was aware of what, who that is. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, for sure. Anybody else?
The city also received an email from Andy Burcelli and Tom Nance with the Sacramento Valley Live Steamers Railroad Museum.
Yep.
And I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom.
Okay.
Except Anil just raised his hand.
Oh, Anil. Welcome, Anil.
Anil, I've unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, council and staff. Thank you for this opportunity. The only thing they want to stress on this application, right? Because this is, there is a lot of organizations, they just want to utilize the City of Rancho Cordova funds, but they doesn't share the objective of what city is trying to do. There are certain events that I noticed, which is trying to duplicate, or they're trying to dilute some of the events. And again, as part of my nonprofit organization, we are trying to unite various organizations bringing together into our city to share our shared objectives, you know? That's what we are trying to do. And earlier this month, we did a huge event in the Village Green Park Festival of Colors, where we tried to collaborate different organizations. In the past, these organizations used to do it at different venues and in different cities, but with our support and collaboration, we were able to bring them into a, as a unifying force, you know, so that we can present City of Rancho Cordova objectives. And so I think when, when the staff are looking into recommendations, please look into those things, because especially, I just want to quote one thing, India has 29 states, and there I see a lot of Indian organizations are competing for those things. What I would see, I'm trying to bring a collaboration so that we can do a one unifying force, representing as a one culture under one nation. That's why we are trying to be unity as a diversity. And I also wrote an article on Grapevine this week, showing the same thing. India, Rancho Cordova represents unity in diversity. I think when, when we are going to recommendations, please consider that one aspect of it and provide the funding who shares our common objectives so that our city can represent unity and diversity. Thank you.
We appreciate that, Anil, thank you.
We have one additional speaker card, Dr. Kevin Cameron.
Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor, city managers. I greatly appreciate it. My name is Dr. Kevin Cameron, I'm the CEO of Anchor Therapy Clinic, located here in Rancho Cordova. Organization has proposed a couple of projects for this grant funding cycle, and I wanted to provide a little, provide you decision makers, a little clarity on the construct of why we're doing what we're doing. Anchor Therapy is one of the predominant community mental health providers for veteran mental health here in Rancho Cordova, just because the VA simply cannot meet the need of our, our veterans in our community. Our grant is intended on meeting three primary goals. Provide immediate mental health care to veterans while they wait the six to nine months it takes to get their first initial mental health appointment, even to begin the treatment process, to even see what's going on with them. Two, to institute a recreational therapy program for these veterans, so they can take care of themselves, get themselves back out into the community, use these great, wonderful community resources that we have here in Rancho Cordova, everything from our parks to our small businesses and everything else. Three, provide cultural competence training to other mental health providers, so they can effectively work with our nation's heroes and help provide them, these veterans, access to effective care that they desperately need. One of the great things that we are lacking in the research, brand-new research is currently shown, is that most mental health providers lack the cultural competence and to work with our veterans, and that's a significant problem that leads to that veteran suicide rate. As a disabled combat vet with a purple heart, I understand the difficulty vets have in receiving mental health care, getting, getting access to it when they do need it and want it. And we are trying to work to eliminate that veteran suicide rate. I really want to thank you for your time and the opportunity for these grants, and I will be available for questions at any time if anyone has any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you for explaining Anchor, because it's probably a new, a new organization for most of us.
Well, Madam Mayor, we've been around for multiple years already. This is the first time we're actually applying for these grants, just because we stay actually pretty, pretty busy. We are a nonprofit, and it's without grants like this that would prevent us from, without, without grants like this, we would be inhibited from being able to provide additional services.
I understand. I get a newsletter from the Air Force Association, actually, it's now the Air Force and Space Association, but yeah, the, all of the services are working so hard to reduce the number of veteran suicides, so we appreciate that.
And we're just trying to fill that gap. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There is no additional public comment.
Wonderful. Okay, then we're finished with that calendar item, so we're going to go to council requests for future agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I do have a email from Councilmember Siri Pulapati that I'd like to read, that she sent to me. Hello, David. The only council member with whom I have spoken about this issue is you. As council members, we have to think about the safety and future of the entire city. We've heard feedback from the residents of Stone Creek and made the motion on March 6th, but since then, the city has been threatened with additional lawsuits totaling over $100 million that could have a crippling impact on critical programs, services, and priorities throughout the city. We have looked into various ways to minimize the impact to residents of Stone Creek and found that Elliot Homes may be willing to sell its warehouse property in Stone Creek to the city. Obviously, that's underway now. I deeply care about the Stone Creek residents, and I also care about our city goals of enjoying a safe, inviting, and livable community and availability of best public services for our residents and businesses. I ask staff to show what the residents would lose due to this lawsuit. I will not be able to attend the April 3 meeting today because of international travel, but if I were there, I would motion or join with you in making a motion or seconding a motion to schedule a hearing on the Logistics Center on April 17th for reconsideration of the direction to staff to prepare findings of denial for the project. Please read this email to the city council at that meeting. So on behalf of Siri, I'm going to suggest that at our April 17th meeting, we schedule a reconsideration of the March 6 action.
Okay. Well, you need three votes to put something on a future agenda. My vote is yes.
And Mayor, may I just clarify the, the motion before you request a second, just to be vividly clear on this most important topic? With the mayor's permission?
To reconsider?
No, yeah, may I just, just restate, my, my understanding is that...
We already said you're in support of it, so are you seconding that?
Well, hang on, Adam wants to...
That's what he's asking you to do, is that there needs to be a second to his motion.
He wants to make sure he knows what the motion is.
I just, to, to clarify, the, the effect of the motion would be to schedule the Logistics Center project for April 17th for reconsideration of the motion that Mr. Sander voted in favor of with two other council members that was given to prepare staff, to give staff direction to prepare findings of denial for the project. It would have the effect simply of placing that item on the council.
For reconsideration only, not, not...
It would not be to give final, there's not final direction being given here tonight. It's simply to place that reconsideration on that agenda, is that...
That is correct.
Correct, I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Had she been here, presumably, she would have made that motion. If she, if we don't do it tonight, it would happen at the next meeting, so...
Okay. So I agree, Donald.
So are you seconding his motion?
Well, it's, we don't need a motion to put something...
Yeah, you do.
You do.
Okay, then I'm seconding.
And he made it.
Okay, then I, then I will second it.
So then we need a roll call, right?
Okay. Call the roll?
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Gatewood is absent. Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we are going to adjourn this meeting and go back into closed session. And Stacy, would you please read again the lengthy title of the closed session?
Conference with legal counsel...
Can I ask, when did we get into the habit of reading items like this, or any item?
Especially with the closed session.
We've never done this. No, we don't, but if you want to do it, go ahead.
I will go ahead and read it.
Recording in progress.
Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956, Period 9D2, four cases, one relating to notice and alleged default under development agreement in 60-day period to cure Logistics Center project at corner of North Mather Boulevard and Bear Hollow Drive from Arthur Coon, January 25th, 2023. A second relating to a notice of city of Rancho Cordova's breach of default under development agreement in 60-day period to cure Stone Creek Industrial Center at corner of Zinfandel Boulevard and Baroque Drive from Arthur Coon, March 13th, 2023. A third relating to an oral threat of litigation from representatives of Elliot Homes that the potential city action on the Logistics Center project will result in litigation by Elliot Homes against the city relating to its Stone Creek properties. APN number 0722360028, APN number 0722360028. APN number 0722360028, APN number 07223608, sorry, 0722360029, APN number 0722360030, APN number 0722860024, APN number 0722860015, APN number 0722860016, APN number 0722860017, APN number 0722860018, and a fourth relating to the written threat by Gloria Smith on behalf of Stone Creek residents for smart growth, March 30, 2023.
Thank you, Stacy. With that, we are adjourned. We will be back to report out from closed session.
Recording stopped.